Okay, we're calling the meeting of the selectmen to order on Monday, March 5. Open session, public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. All right. We have a 7:30 appointment with Capital Planning and FinCom to talk about finalizing the budget and a couple of other things, but we'll jump in and try to do what we can before that. Okay, we have minutes of February 26th, open session. All three were present.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Any comments or questions?
No.
Okay, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and we have a reimbursement for phone service for Mary in the amount of $10. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We should get two signatures.
I usually sign Christine. I sign Chris just because of the cards.
Need a little help figuring out how to spell it.
Could you help?
Do you ever accidentally do your maiden name?
No, it's been a long time, not lately. I have to think twice, though, when I write something to my brother.
Well, it's funny, because moving into town and marrying into the town, when I first set up my account at Village Farm Supply, they set it up as Tom Bergen. And I've tried to correct it a number of times, it just doesn't work, so that's what it is, you know? I don't use my maiden name.
Except at Village Farm.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's what I say, I don't use my maiden name at Village Farm.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, now we have motor vehicle refund fiscal year 18.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Any comments or questions?
No.
This is the amount of $50. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the next is the disposition of a color scanner. How old is this, do you know, roughly? Was it here when you got here?
It was.
Okay, so it's pretty old.
No one was interested?
No.
Okay. And the question is, can we just, we've declared it a surplus. We've advertised to other town departments to see if anybody had an interest in it. There is no interest. Having declared it surplus, can we direct that it can simply be placed in to take it or leave it shed? And I think this, at this point, has to be a very nominal value, so I'd suggest we could, and I'd take a motion in that regard.
Motion so moved.
Second?
Any comments or questions?
No.
All right, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next are the budgets. I sat down with the treasurer last week, just to, you know, go over things with me, and I understand the situation at this point. And it's going to result in, you know, in a diminishment of the budget for those two departments. I would accept a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the treasurer's budget.
Second?
Okay, any comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm just trying to, trying to think of how we sign this now. I think, let's have, we'll sign it as the appointing authority, because effective this next year, we are the appointing authority for the collector's budget, right?
Right. I said treasures, I guess, in the motion, but I meant collector.
Yeah, collector, sorry, collector. So I think that we should sign this as the appointing authority, because we are the appointing authority as, you know, as of that, the beginning of the fiscal year. And then let's have Dennis, go back to Dennis, and have him sign it as department head at this point, I think that's...
Right.
Okay?
I did wonder whether, at some point, we need to do a job description for the collector.
Isn't that still mostly defined by state law?
Yeah.
Most likely. I didn't know.
I don't think so.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's all defined by...
I mean, I do think we're going to be doing some work on the combination, because we will have to, you know...
Right.
We will have to put that out as a, you know, as a position, so we're going to have to put together a job description on that when we get into next year.
Okay.
But I don't, I think at this point...
You didn't think we need to do just the collector for this year?
No, because I think it's pretty well-defined by statutes, you know, I mean, it's...
Yeah, that's, I just happen to know that because the town management sort of went through and got who had job descriptions and where they came from, and that one comes from.
Yeah. So, you know, we're going to have to look, see if we do have to do something, or if it's sufficiently described when we get to the combination of the two, but...
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that one, because it's obviously not come up.
Yeah, exactly. I can't answer that tonight, but we don't have to tonight, so, all right. So, in all of that, did we actually take the vote?
No.
All right.
We can do it again.
All right, so we're, any further comments or questions on this?
No.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And then, Mary, would you have Dennis actually sign this as department head?
Yes.
Thanks. Okay, regional dispatch. Do we, are we ready for this, then?
We haven't actually approved the budget.
No, no, I mean, do we have a firm enough figure that we can do this?
I think, is it possible to wait another?
Yeah, I mean, we can't, it's not only possible, but if we don't have the figure, we probably should wait.
Yeah, we haven't voted a figure, a final figure, but it's estimated, you know.
Okay. No, I think we need that figure.
Right.
Okay. Police and fire insurance.
Right, she gave the quote.
Which is 21.
Right, well, is that rounding it up?
Here, why don't you take a look at this, because I'm confused by that.
Yeah, I left it blank, only because, but if you wanted to go with them, you would sign the top of this sheet, which is their quote.
Right. And then that top figure, wouldn't that show 28 and 21 and a $7,000 diminution?
I just didn't want to suppose what you wanted the budget.
But if...
Yes, it would be, that's correct.
If that's what we're voting on, that's what I would say.
That's right.
Okay, you can hand it back to me, and then I'll initial, make those changes if people are agreed. Do you want to, do you want to clue everybody else, because you and I had the opportunity to talk about this when I was putting together...
That's the actual quote, so it's $20,159.
Oh, that's going to make it hard for me to do the math.
Well, if you want to round it to 21, it may be a little even.
That's fine, well, do you, you guys want an update on it?
Sure.
Okay.
I was going to say, we got an email, but yeah, if you want to...
Just so that people know, that this would be a change from VFIS for our police and fire sickness and accident, or what they call 111F coverage, and that's the workers' comp coverage for police and fire. We have been with VFIS for quite a while, but Maya, who otherwise insures us for workers' comp and property and liability, gave us a quote that's going to save $7,000 a year, and basically keep everything all at one location. Customer service has been very good with Maya. I have a person who I see on a regular basis, and a whole cadre of people I deal with regularly. Not faulting VFIS, I haven't had a reason to have to pick their brain, but they're just not physically present the same way Maya is, so it's been really nice working with Maya.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's always nicer if you can limit it to one vendor rather than two alsos.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's fair enough. So therefore, what we will be requesting is $20,159, which will result in an approximately $7,000 savings over the previous year.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Any further comments or questions?
No.
All right, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Savings is $6,841, for those who are nitpicky.
I did just look, the next Devon's meeting is March 21st, so hopefully we'll have a definite number by then.
Yep. And Mary, on this one, are you, it says time to advise them that we're changing covers, all you're saying...
I will.
Yeah, that's all you're saying, is to confirm what we just did, okay?
Yep, right.
All right.
I'm sorry, you guys look like you're in the middle of something. Is there not an officer at the front at all?
Not at this time of night.
If you call the police, the phone in the lobby, they will send a police officer to meet you.
Okay.
They may be in the building, or they may be on the road, but wherever they are, they'll come and meet you.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Mary, this, what do we...
Yep, so collector, you just did, communication...
Oh, yeah, this is just your update sheet, okay, yep.
Yep.
All right. Okay, so...
I'll update that, that'll be quick.
Yep, that's fine. Okay.
Behind that manila folder, if you want to do other new business matters, there's a manila folder and a manila folder.
Mm-hmm.
Does that say new business up top?
Oh, yes, the next one does, yes. Okay. I just, for people's information, I had passed this around earlier. This is the superintendent's of schools' reaction to the proposed or possible March 14th school walkout and the policy that they've indicated for that. I didn't know anybody had any comments or questions, or...
I didn't see it, so...
Okay. I mean, we could actually talk about it next week, if you like. I have some thoughts about it, that are certainly just one man's opinion, but...
Okay.
Agenda for next week?
Yeah, I'm thinking, yes, that's still...
Okay. Okay.
Does anybody have any comments they want to do now? Does anybody want to speak about it next week, or...
We can do it next week.
Okay. All right, so put it on the agenda for next week. How are you, Sarah? Welcome back. This next one is new insurance following completion of the highway barn? And they're indicating a list of things that we need to provide them.
Yeah, so I just gave it to the COPMs today, and I want to chase that down.
Yeah, I think, I think you can pass this one along to Keith.
Did, yeah.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure everyone...
Yeah, I don't think there's anything pressing. It's basically saying that before they insure us, we need a certificate of occupancy, the value of the building, value of the contents, estimated date for move-in, what'll happen to the current location of the highway barn equipment, and they will let us know whether they need to do an inspection, so...
Several of those items, hopefully, we will find out about on Wednesday.
Yeah, because as I say, I think Keith can, and the committee can put those things together without, okay. All right.
I guess the same would go with 1870. We're not there yet either, but when that time comes, it'll be the same, I guess, the pro, pretty much the same procedure.
Yeah, have we ever said, have we ever changed the status of 1870, though?
Antonelli has control of the site until...
Okay, yeah, all right. Yes, we then, we do have to let them know, and hopefully, they did, they did come and replace that...
Pole?
That pole.
I saw, I was going through town when they were replacing it.
Yeah. I don't know quite what other steps remain, but that's certainly one step, a good deal closer.
Yes.
Yeah. I'm beginning to think that by the end of this month, we'll actually be in it.
You see a light at the end of the tunnel, maybe?
I do. You never know what it's on the front of, you know?
But what are you going to do when you don't have to fight with National Grid anymore?
I think I'll go to the vineyard for the summer. No, that'll be a nice one to have off the, off the plate, I'll tell you.
Yeah.
Okay, the next item, we got five minutes or so before our meeting, so we might as well talk about it, the closure policy, do you want to talk about that?
The weather policy, or...
Our weather policy, yes.
I sat down with Chief Galvin and Chief Zee on Friday and discussed the feedback that we had gotten on that and their concerns, and basically, I'd added a line to the, the one that I passed out currently, that just said when the building is closed, that unless otherwise stated that the building was closed for 24 hours. But you can still, I mean, based on discussion with Keith and the emergency management director, you could choose to delay it, you could choose to...
And who, who has this discussion?
Which discussion? The...
The discussion to close it, and then...
The chair of the board and Keith for highway, and it would be Chief Zee as our emergency management director.
Okay, okay. Okay. And, and I apologize, because I was doing other things today.
Okay.
Do we have a timeframe in which we would do that? I'm just looking at the weather forecast here, not at choosing or reading it.
Well, I think the intent was to have it up by 7:00 the next morning, or 7:00 in the morning, that the closure would happen.
Yeah, that's right, no, I'm just, as I say, I had no chance to look at it today.
I have to look at the details again, but...
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm looking at this weather forecast, and notwithstanding my, because it came in today, and I was doing other correspondence, I said, oh, we, you know, we can put this off to next week, and then it'll be practically spring, and we probably won't need it for a while, and then Lisa said, but, you know, but we do have one in the interim that we could, yeah, so, so much for that. Well, what I, what I'd suggest from this is that if we, if we want to do a dry run on this, we'll still put it on the agenda and look at, look at it in more detail next Monday, but I can communicate with Keith and Chief Zee and give them a conference call line to call in at 6:45 on Wednesday morning.
All right.
No, no sleeping in on a snowy morning for the chairman while this is in place, but yes, and then...
And I'll see if I can work with Chief Galvin to get the messaging system working by then.
Okay.
He just needs a list of phone numbers.
And we will decide at that point, I mean, looking at this weather forecast, it almost suggests, you know, it could be open until noon, I don't, you know, but that will be more apparent.
Then, then would there be a message go out to people?
Yeah, the police have a messaging system, so if they have a list of numbers for the people in the town offices, they can send out a voicemail.
So it could go out like noon time, instead of 7:00, whatever?
Yeah.
Yeah, it can be used either way?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the closure will be whatever we decide. And it does sound like, once it happens, if it, if the predictions are correct, the 24-hour period is probably reasonable, but we can, the three of us can talk about that on Wednesday morning. Fair enough?
Sounds good.
Okay? We've also, and I will get back to them, we have a, a couple of suggestions for mediation dates for the Capes of Berlín. I will look at my calendar, and I'm happy to attend if I...
If you're not available?
Yeah.
I'd be happy to attend in your place.
I will try to make myself available.
Okay.
Yeah.
Not sure if it's just one meeting, or could be more than one.
It could be more than one.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
They were also asking if you prefer Boston or Berlin.
I, myself, will go, and I'll answer her, but I will go back and say, it probably doesn't matter as much to me as other people, and I could do either one. Okay? And let's put the Deutch Williams review on the agenda for next week.
Okay.
All right. All right. Are you expecting more people, or are you...
I'd like to see more people.
No, that's...
Is that what you get sometimes?
Yeah.
I'm just trying to reconcile, because the warrant articles you guys published with the warrant articles, we know about, they don't reconcile well, so...
What?
You have several on there that we were told were pulled and not part of the meeting, and we have a couple...
I wonder what version you have, because there...
Mesa, I don't know, last revised, 227, so maybe I sold it away. I just pulled out of my box.
We did go through last week, and weeded. And actually, we haven't actually reviewed, I mean, we went through and talked about weeding it, I haven't actually reviewed the...
The three conservations were pulled.
They were pulled in that...
No, but I was talking about a fire truck, and a ATV vehicle, and paving of a parking lot, and two different ones for inspectional software, because we only had, knew about one, so...
Okay.
Luckily, we've not voted on warrant articles yet, so...
No, that's fine, and we can, we can go back to Department Senate. Typically, what we do with items that were put on by sister boards is, if it's going to be pulled, we wait for that notification to come to us from that board, so...
And I can tell you, the pumper truck, at least, there's some confusion. I think that capital planning and finance and the fire department need to chat about that.
Because when we had the fire chief in front of us, with the chair of that committee, and said, there's no money in this year to do it, you're using all your money for other things, we just got one through last year...
He seemed to be confused, so maybe an email or something, because I, yes.
I'll have no problem, I mean, like, confirming that this is the direction we're going, so...
Just, like I said, because I...
And Keith was there when we talked about moving the paving of the parking lot here, because we already have over $1 million for the requests, and probably about $600,000 to spend on it, so, you know, if I'm adding another million to it, then it's still only $600,000 to spend, and $2 million for the requests, so...
Yeah. Because I was under that impression, too. I just had a conversation, and there was some confusion.
This is just the, so this is the budget as it sits. This is requested, and is no different than the Google link that I've sent out a couple times, just to have, have it in front of us, and this is only the expenses side, because really, for our conversation today, the, you know, the other pieces aren't as relevant for our conversation. And so we've not, as FinCom have not voted on any of our recommendations yet at this point, we've just managed to get the last couple of numbers last week, which is a little late in the cycle, but that as we sit right now, departments have requested $843,000 in increases, and if you take the new growth at $300,000, and a two-and-a-half percent at about $250,000, probably means we can afford about $550,000 worth of increase, and so that means that we're looking at cutting $300,000 to $350,000 out of the requested to get down to where we think we should be. Some of the bigger raised items, we really don't have the ability to cut. ACABET's assessment has gone up by some $80,000, because the number of students there has gone from 19 last year, which was a low, and we knew this was going to happen, back to like, I think, 24, or something like that, which caused that to go up. The capital assessment with Tohonto, because they've finally done their, their final bonding, went up a chunk. Worcester Retirement did its annual sort of increase.
Yep.
And health insurance doing its annual sort of increase, and so those are responsible for about a third of our overall requested increases, and that means...
A third of the 800?
Yes.
Okay.
And so that means, you know, we're looking at, out of $600,000 worth of other requests, we have to cut about half of them, unless we want to, you know, we do have the levy limit potentially to push it up, but that starts seriously impacting taxpayers, which we would rather not do. And so I don't know what your general feelings, the largest, you know, police and fire, we're the largest single increases, but there are, you know, significant increases across it. The Council on Aging is adding a halftime staff person. Our recreations fund that they used to use to fund most of their stuff is, because they've lost some of their larger sponsors, not adequate to do it anymore, and so they're seeing a substantial increase. And then, you know, you guys have asked for an increase in contracted amounts. Legal has gone up, and again, some of those things aren't going to be where they're going to be. I mean, even if we at town meeting decided to level fund like legal, if your legal bills come in higher, we're just going to pull them out of, you know, reserve funds, because legal's going to be what it's going to be.
Right.
There's an $18,000 increase in electrical that I didn't...
Was that for the new town barn?
Which I thought the town barn was generally going to be solar-powered.
There's no solar on the town barn.
We haven't done solar yet. Solar is coming.
Not part of the $4 million we paid for that building?
No. Energy is looking at adding that back in over time, but it would probably be a staggered thing, and it's not there now.
The other piece is that we currently have budgeted increase in the Treasurers Department for them to take on some of the tax assessor, the tax assessor's duties and we have a tax assessor budget. And so my guess is one of those two is not necessarily needed.
Need tax collector?
Tax collector, yeah, tax collector.
Yes, I think we, we're going to be submitting a budget that I believe, what is it, about 20K less for combined?
It's less, yeah.
Right, and so, under...
Or 18, yeah, I mean, that's right. Yes, you're right. It's 21 out of the collectors, but then there's an additional 3,000, so you're right, it's about 18. So you will see those two coming in at 18, you know, speaking within the nearest thousand or so.
Right.
18K less than those two combined departments.
Okay.
Where the previous year.
And where, I mean, we have two weeks to vote on all of these things and so if there are some changes or ideas of where you're going, uh, sooner to know about it, the better.
Yes, well, we signed...
I'm expecting, I'm expecting some, some of our savings to be there.
Yeah, well, we signed, we signed that budget tonight, so...
Would it be helpful if I emailed that over to you?
Yeah, I can, I can process it from there.
So that's, that's one.
Hey, start, journey of a thousand miles starts with the first steps.
Mm-hmm.
You know, data systems, expenses went up, but that's because they're taking on telephone, which we eliminated.
Right.
So that's sort of the wash there. I'm trying to see where the others. Public building, you know, wages went up because we're just covering the admin costs for 1870 Town Hall while they don't have...
Transitional year, yeah.
In a transitional year. So that's expected to go back down, but this year it's gone up.
Mm-hmm.
The expense, the increase in expenses to public buildings is known because we've seen the repair bills.
Yep.
I'm sympathetic to that, although that's another sort of increase. We talked about the electrical. Police and fire both saw some significance. Fire, again, is, uh, at $160,000, so it's a raise in just the salary line, so it's responsible for a serious chunk of the, the increased request. And to make it clear, if it's not, that's, that's going to sort of make per diems, a couple of per diems, sort of, I think, seven days a week.
Is it phased out?
It's not, it's not going to the management of it.
I think that may be negotiable.
The increase is mostly due to, almost entirely due to adding per diems and not...
No, it's actually adding, um, full-time people during core times and then shifting per diems. Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
That may be also be something you can discuss with the fire chief though, based on...
Right, it could be something in a direction we want to go as a town. It's just, there's just not money at this point.
It may be able to be delayed or...
Yep, or phased in over longer periods of time.
And have they, um, have the, the, money's coming in for mitigation.
Yep.
What are we committing those to at this point?
Last year, we committed 300,000 of it to offset the increase last year in fire department expenses and to cover the loan payments for the new fire truck. And so the loan payments for the new fire truck are, uh, the 100 and, I want to say about 150K, it could be 125K. And, you know, we, we were offsetting because there have been significant increases in the cost of the fire department over the last several years and so we tried to do that with mitigation.
Yeah, which we actually expected because we didn't really have anything like 24/7 coverage and we were moving in that direction and that's actually why we had the, you know, a big part of why we had the mitigation funds. So just, just to return to that, the mitigation funds, last year we spent 150 for the fire...
And another 150 to offset increases.
Okay.
And, uh, and that's cumulative because the previous...
And then there's another 150 and what did we spend that on?
We've been spending it on buying all the capital equipment for the police and fire department. And so if you think that's for, you know, the police cruiser that's being requested, the increase to the, um, radio system that's being requested...
And that's what, uh, that's what you would, would do this year too, is put it to that?
Yep, yep.
Okay. And then either...
When I say we can afford about $600,000 or $700,000 for capital items, I include thinking that we have about 150 to 200,000 dollars worth of public safety mitigation funds that can help us.
That would contribute to that, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, um, okay. And so what we're talking about is another 160...
Right.
That is being added this year. Okay. And, um, so I think what we're saying is the capital, right? The fire truck...
Yep.
...payments and 150 in the increased expense is all being paid out of the mitigation fund. And of that increase, then, the proposal is that only 160, and I'm not suggesting that number can't be reduced, but I just want to, to point out that, um, that means that 160,000 of that increase is being raised, you know, in the tax levy as opposed to being funded through the mitigation...
Right.
...payments. And I, you know, I mean, I just, I just, I want to, I just want to point that out because the, you know, the reason that we negotiated those mitigation payments was...
Right.
...to, um, significantly underwrite the expense of bringing a fire rescue into a, a single department, a semi-professional, you know, department and a department that had organized and dependable coverage 24/7. And, um, if we're looking, you know, at a, at a plan that does that in the next year for 160 net, you know, cost above and beyond the mitigation, you know, that, that is sort of what, you know, we were thinking all along, that, you know, that the mitigation would substantially underwrite stuff that we, that we had to do. The mitigation, I think, is considerably in excess of sort of the direct costs of supporting, you know, the, the commercial. So I just think, you know, when we think about it, we need, you know, we need to think about those, you know, those things and if we have to stretch out the, um, the conversion department or if we have to reassess whether, you know, what kind of coverage we want on 24/7, I think that's fine. But I do, you know, I do want people to realize that when you look at those figures, uh, it's only $160,000 that is being actually funded out of the tax levy to, you know, increase, you know, those, those services, so...
Look, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but we've gone six-figure increases three years in a row on this department.
Right. Which, you know, again, and that's because we're fundamentally changing the department.
And we could decide to take a lot more of the mitigation and then just use other funds, you know, raise and appropriate or free cash or just not replace...
And again, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that, you know, we let that 160 stand. I'm just trying, I was just trying to set, you know, context for that. And, you know, at some point, we knew that we would be spending something more than purely mitigation funds to increase those services.
When I say that we can afford $550,000 worth of increases, that includes new growth and so that's the, the increased property taxes from the developments that happened that are causing us to have to need full-time and so that is also paying for some of it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. So that's, that, the 160 for fire is big.
Right.
And I, that's a point well taken.
The building inspector has some increases in expenses that I don't fully understand. I wasn't, I, I've missed some weeks and so...
Put the software in?
They were expenses and not part-time wages because I think you did ask for some additional hours for Leanne?
So we added $7,000 to wages, but expenses went from 5,200 to 20,000.
Is that the software?
The software to purchase it is 35. That's on the warrant.
Right, it's a warrant article.
The difference...
Oh, yes, yes, I know.
Maybe though, right now, 3% is taken of every, um, permit.
Right.
And the new software, that would not be the case. Is that what...
Yeah, no, no, I know what, and I talked to Joe about this.
Okay.
There is a one-time installation and licensing cost. That amount was reflected in the special article. There is an annual licensing cost that will be an annual run rate.
Right.
That is what is included in the budget. When Joe and I talked about the appropriate way to handle that, we thought that that was the appropriate way to handle it because, you know, the special article is the one-time, you know, conversion, you know, initial licensing. And that, to put that, to put the annual, you know, use fee in the special article, it would result in a bump next year and was sort of, we thought, sort of fundamentally not representative of what we were doing, you know?
Right.
Okay?
And currently, they are paying 3% of each permit, um, rather than a lump sum.
Right.
So I think this is probably close to a wash when you...
Right, it would get a raise like the permitting fees then to cover it if it's not a 3%?
Yeah, I think the permitting fees then totally go to the town rather than 3% of them going to the vendor.
So why don't we ask for a breakdown of that? Because I think what you're saying is that...
Is there, is it really just a moving around or is it really...
It should be.
Instead of the tax...
My, my...
I think it should be a moving around.
Yeah. My understanding had...
The 3% right now is tacked on, on top of the fees directly, so if they're doing away with that, then there's no extra money coming to the town.
So he may need to adjust fees to...
Yep.
Yep.
And is the IT committee in favor of this particular software?
Actually, the, um, IT committee put in a grant to pay for the software potentially, so it's...
For the initial acquisition?
For the initial acquisition.
So we, okay, so that we might end up...
So that's going to move forward in the building inspector, for the building inspector?
Yeah.
Okay.
That was what the, the Community Compact IT grant was applied for, that cost.
So, um, in terms of the annual run rate, if we were to come back to you, we, meaning the selectmen and the building inspector, came back to you with a suggested, um, adjustment of fees that would amortize this, that would, that, you guys would find that to be acceptable?
Yeah.
All right.
And it probably doesn't take a giant change to the numbers either to pull that off too.
No, probably not. I mean, but I'd have to talk to him because obviously, we have a fixed annual cost.
Right.
And in a year when you've got a lot of big building...
Right.
Then, yeah. But in a year when you had virtually little, maybe not. So I think we do have to just sit down and talk to him about a reasonable amortization of that. All right?
We talked about the Council of Aging, adding up their sort of volunteer coordinator instead of being a volunteer themselves to be a paid position. It's sort of part of what we see across a lot of places where there used to be more bodies to do things that the amount of work involved, it's harder to find, as work increases bodies to do it.
Yeah. And I would also say, I mean, we do have, um, I mean, it's true of every population.
Right.
We're an aging population, but, uh... Yes. It affects all of us, but the, um, you know, I would say that, um, you know, the, the number of people in that category have grown. The services, um, that we've provided have grown and have been very economically provided at, at this point.
You know, a lot of this has to do with the van that was purchased.
Correct.
That we purchased a used van because we didn't know what the usage was going to be when it was purchased and didn't want to spend a lot of money on a new thing that turned out to sit in a parking lot.
And you know what? It's not sitting in the parking lot.
Everything I read and see and hear anecdotally is that it is actually very heavily used and it's really helping our residents stay in their homes.
It's hugely heavily used and you're right, it keeps people in their homes and keeps people in their homes and, and off the roads when they, they shouldn't be. You know, I mean, that's, that's, that's a nice combination of effects.
Yep.
Yeah, and, you know, and I, um, I would say that, that's one, uh, I'd, I'd love to keep that and cut 20,000 out of something else.
Yep.
I really think that's an area that, you know, these people pay taxes, have paid taxes their whole lives and, you know?
Right.
They should get some services.
Frankly, the current model is not sustainable.
Right.
They can't keep doing what they're doing.
Although, again, there is a large number of increases this year that we have to find something to do with, I don't find any of the requests unreasonable. They all come from a, from a, from a good place.
Yep.
They all are, are coming, a lot of them come from people who I think really respect the taxpayers, mostly because they are taxpayers and, and are impacted by these sort of things as well. And, uh, it will be tough for us to figure out places that might get us down to a budget that we feel is sustainable. After that, the next sort of large, um, increase was the recreation department, which you, they presented to you, they presented to us as well, mostly because they've, because we generally have not been taking care of the, the fields and stuff as well. They've lost one of their large sponsors that were, were renting the fields a lot. It means the, their, their revolving fund won't have enough to cover their expenses. This budget does include trying to take care of the, the fields at a level that might be able to, you know, get someone back. We will see whether or not this is something that will be a one-off year or something that we'll have to do in a more sustainable. It's also one of the reasons why we might, um, why FinCom is really thinks, uh, Community Preservation Act is something we should go because it could, it wouldn't necessarily help fund the operating budget, but would help fund the capital stuff that would allow their, their revolving fund to pay for more of their expenses again.
Because my impression was that they thought that going forward, it would still be higher than it had in the past.
Yep.
That it would never go back to the amount.
Well, and, and maintaining the field is not a one-year thing.
And part of the reason we're in the problem that we are now is we've kind of neglected that for a while.
While you're, while you have it, down at 107, this is just, this is news just in, but you'll get other updates. But the, um, the expense for that item will be 21, 20,159 instead of 28,000. That's the police fire second accident, so...
See, there's another $7,500.
Well, you know, we'll, we'll put that against the Council on Aging. Just, I mean, that was the other new, you know, new news just tonight, uh, other than the, the collector treasurer stuff.
We were lucky that although ACABET is, uh, going up by about 75,000, Tohonto had a four or so percent increase, uh, but it, once again, the ratio of Berlin students has gone down one more time versus Boylston's, we didn't expect that. We expected the pendulum to start swinging back. This year, it's been at least pushed up one more year, the pendulum has swung, so we ended up with a net decrease on their operating assessment. Their capital assessment though, did go up 70,000, which, um...
I thought I read in the paper too, that Tohonto's, Boylston was not happy with the Tohonto...
Right, but Boylston is not and, and their final budget meeting, they couldn't get quorum and have rescheduled, but they've now rescheduled after we have to have our stuff all done, so they don't have it scheduled at this point and we're voting in two days to finalize the budget so that we can get it, you know? We can get our recommendations out to departments, so if they don't like our recommendations, we have a little bit of time to adjust it and get it in time so that the town, uh, report can get out in a, in a timely manner, so...
If Boylston decides to, it only benefits us as well.
Right.
Yes, of course, it can only get better.
Right.
Right.
There's not a big grounds well for them to want to spend more.
Yeah.
If we get a 10 or 20,000 cut there, that saves us from trying to cut somewhere else.
It just kind of concerns me when Boylston does that every year.
Yep. Yeah, it's one of the reasons why I'm not a...
They don't support the budget.
Right, I'm not a fan of regionalization, but that's a different story for a different day. Retirement, Worcester Retirement went up there, 50,000, another 10%, it goes up about 10% every year, that at some point will be sustainable for us as a community, just like health insurance, although you got it just an increase of rate of 6.5, which would allow us to have cut this number if we end up adding, uh, full-time firemen, fire persons to the, uh, the...
Yeah.
Right, to the department.
People love fire, yes.
It won't be a number we can reduce at all because we'll have to add more people to this and as we add more staff, you know, if, if we end up in combining the treasurer and tax collector together, we add a full-time person or someone who's over whatever the minimum threshold is for insurance there, we start adding insurance and as we add positions, we also add to Worcester retirement costs as well. And so, you know, that gets us to our $843,000 increase in requested stuff. Only a couple of them are large, a lot of them are small. I mean, we didn't hit the departments that, we did, uh, the two-and-a-half percent raise because that's what the, the index said, that has a small effect across all... the, the index said that has a small effect across all, all the departments. And so I've just highlighted the ones where, or sort of increases that are beyond that. And I imagine we will have a, we have two FinCom meetings to actually take care of the warrant articles and budget, including this coming Wednesday, which Mother Nature might make us holding a meeting even much more exciting and interesting. That potentially gives us one meeting to do an entire budget and, and warrant articles, so.
Bring the coffee.
Bring the coffee. I know that I've encouraged the FinCom members, and you guys can do as well, the Google Sheet link that I've sent out to you folks, what I did is I created a copy of it for my own personal use or download as an Excel spreadsheet and did my own exercises about, okay, you know, if I could, where would I cut it? Can I get it down? I think I've put together a budget that meets a 600,000 or so increase instead of an 840,000 increase, but some of those cuts weren't cuts that even I really liked doing, so.
Even you.
Even me, so. I, I plan on going back through and seeing what I can, I can do to match it. I think I counted on some health insurance savings from what was requested to pull it off that I don't know how reasonable or realistic that is if we end up adding these positions.
Yeah, and I will say, one of the things that we talked about as we were putting together budget is to review our application of step increases plus COLAs as, as part of the general personnel administration. We didn't feel necessarily that it was appropriate to change, you know, move the goalposts, you know, late in the game in, you know, in this budget here. But I think that, that is something that we need to look at because I think for a fairly long period of time, we were not paying our people appropriately and so having the step increases plus the COLA was appropriate. But I think at this point, looking at, you know, looking at relative budget figures, I think we're caught up and I think we need to, you know, I think we need to look at a combination of merit and COLA rather than step and COLA and see what we can do about bending that expense line down in the next budget here.
I've always encouraged looking at health insurance, that really, health insurance and retirement are now responsible for over 10% of our whole budget. And so how we figure out ways of bending that curve.
Yeah.
Universal health coverage might take care of that.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Which we can implement as a town.
When you figured that one out, run for president, you know, that...
Massachusetts could go in that direction.
They could.
So in addition to the budgets, FinCom has two warrant articles that we have proposed. One is the Community Preservation Act that Buzz, who's not here, has really been meeting folks and pushing and organizing and it would be great to have you folks behind it as well. I think it takes care of some of the funding struggles that we've had in the conservation. I think it allows us to continue to preserve some of the historic stuff, which the town and I find quite important to do. It will help us, I think, preserve some of the recreation stuff we have going on and address some of the housing issues. I think it's the right direction for the town to go in and I think they're, they're proposing even some exemptions that will make it have less of an impact on, on the people who don't have the higher value properties in this town by, I think, exempting the first $100,000 of value for both small businesses and, and homeowners.
Will you want a hand signal of my level of support for that?
I was gonna say, yeah, yeah.
Way, way up there.
Okay. And I think Buzz has put together a good group of people. He's talking to all the effective parties to make sure they're out there and let their constituents to know that this is something. The other that I know is not as well received by the selectmen is our attempted an under ride that we have done well mostly because of the malls that have come into town, the commercial properties we have built and have yet to build, if ever bridge ever gets built. We have currently about a little over a million, between a million and a million two in excess levy capacity where we have managed to keep the budgets under control enough where we could in theory take from the taxpayers another million plus in value without having to do a 2.5 override. And I think that's, that's a lot of discretionary power and if we had an emergency that required us to spend an extra million as a town, I would love to, I really would want that to have to go in front of the voters for a 2.5 override. The interesting wrinkle about this whole thing, of course, is that there's only one body that can actually put an underride on the ballot and it is not town meeting. Buzz's read is that it is the selectmen that can put it on the ballot. And so the wording of our warrant article is to encourage the selectmen to put it on the ballot and get a chance to discuss it, actually add a town meeting where we can get sort of a broader spectrum of folks' opinions on the matter.
Now, would you remove the entire excess levy capacity?
No, our recommendation is about a half million, I was about, about half of it. I think we need to have some so that we can, on a year where we need to do more tax and spend for warrant articles, could potentially do that. We might eat into some of that this year. We're likely to eat into some of that this year. If we can only raise it by 550,000 before we start eating into that excess levy capacity, we'll probably eat into it a tiny bit.
Okay, you want a hand signal for my...
Yeah.
I can't get down that low. Yeah, I mean, I just...
So at the town meeting, this, would it just be a discussion? It wouldn't happen? It's...
It wouldn't happen automatically, no.
Right.
The warrant article I wrote it is, is to encourage the selectmen to put it on a budget, on a ballot.
Like on a, oh, on a ballot?
Yeah, it has to go on a ballot, right.
It'd have to go on a ballot.
Yeah, and then have to pass, the voters would have to pass it.
Yeah, yeah. I gotta say, I think, I think it's, I think it's irresponsible. I'm very, I think we already, we have right now a major, you know, commercial property that is, shall I say, problematic. And I think to paint ourselves into a corner with that is, is not a good thing. Anybody in this town who's a voter can come to town meeting and put in two or three hours of fanny time and listen and be informed about, you know, the need to spend money and vote for it or vote against it. And to me, yeah, plus, and you know, I've taken heart the stuff that you've just said about the budget and I'm going to be looking at it in the next week or two and I'll be talking to the fire department about it. I think people represent, you know, people elect us to deal with these issues. I think we have to be responsible and I think your points here are good, you know, until, you know, we push back on individual items, but until all the items are in, you never, you know, you really never know where the Christmas list is until, you know, until you guys put it together.
Right.
And I think that that's an admirable process and I think we've done well over the years with it and I, I would love to get this thing, you know, down closer to the 600 that you're talking about. And I think that's, that's, that's the way to go and not to, not to take some of the fiscal flexibility that we have and, you know, and, you know, and give it away. I mean, I just, you know, I, I think it's our job and I think we should do it, but, and I might feel, I would always feel that way, but I would feel that way with a great deal less concern and less passion if I weren't worried about some of, you know, the, the commercial properties that we have. That, you know, that really to me, you know, makes me very scared for, you know, for trying to trim back what our flexibility is. And I really mean it, you know, in terms of town meeting is the place where you vote these things and any damn person who wants to can come down and hundreds of them can come down and, you know, and, and vote and speak. So it's not like people don't have a vote.
Right. Although at town meeting, we spent more time, this last time, we were talking about zero line, dollar line items than we did on really anything else in the budget.
But again, that's, you know, that's what the floor determines, you know? I mean, that's, that's democracy, you know?
What they do historically.
Yeah.
Well, because a lot of people get overwhelmed with large numbers and so they rather have the interest in those smaller ones.
I'm just curious, so you can see an instance where we would have to additionally levy more than $500,000 or, I'm just...
What I'm saying is this, that if we, if we lost a significant chunk, you know, levy limit is, is related to the value of property, you know? And if we had a significant hit to the total value of property, then our percentage of what we'd have to levy would have to go up, you know? So it, you know, it does concern me to, you know, to start to play with, you know, available, I mean, Prop 2.5 is already a pretty constraining rule. I mean, it limits you to an increase of new growth plus 2.5%. That puts you, you know, in the absence of growth, it puts you on a, you know, on a fixed income with a 2.5% escalator and we have managed with, you know, within that, albeit we've had some new growth, you know, we have managed within that. That's a tough thing to do.
Agreed.
And we've done it. So I don't see, you know, and I think as, as this new growth has come in, we have dedicated it to renewing the sort of capital structure of the town, the schools, disbuilding, you know? To me, you know, that was the hedge. I mean, that soaked up that money so as we, you know, as we pay things off, that, that becomes available, but, you know, we, that's, you know, we have payments that go out, you know, a number of years now because of a couple of new projects. We have not used that money, you know, to, to blow up, you know, the operating budget. So I think, you know, I mean, I think we've managed it pretty well and I just don't, you know, I, I think if you're, you're concerned about stealing, somebody stealing your wallet, the remedy is not to throw your wallet away, you know? That's just how I feel about it.
And I agree. A lot of towns around us have had to do overrides for general operating or for school operating and that we've managed to, as, as the malls have come online and added to the tax base, have used it to fix some problems pay-wise around the town to address some of the other issues we've, we've...
And also do a lot of capital stuff.
And we've got, we've got a lot of capital stuff.
That stuff soaks up, you know, when there's money lying around, the operating budget will use it up, but we really tried to do that. One, because it's a hedge...
Right.
...against changing economic situations in the next generation because, you know, to deal with those capital things. And two, it soaked up that money so that it would bleed more slowly into the operating...
And the fact that we have a levy capacity of over a million dollars shows that we didn't just spend the money as it came.
Right. We're already not spending.
And, and I think as much from, I agree that all spending is voted on, you know, through you folks to budgets, to the FinCom, that, that puts the master budget together to town meeting, that when a lot of people start asking about, you know, these, these malls have increased the amount of spending we've needed, we needed administrative assistance in some departments because the workload has gone up, we've had to do this stuff for the fire department because the, the demands have been higher, that us doing an underride of, of some of the money returned is that we're able to do this because of the malls that have come to this town. We've been able to lower the property tax rate for five or six years in a row because of the malls have come to this town, where you see the tax rates going up and the levy limit's being pushed and overrides happening in towns around us.
And very much to, to the point of that, we have not, I mean, this year, we are not taxing people a million dollars that we could under law because we're managing it not to do so.
Right.
So what's the problem? You know?
There's not a problem. I see this underwrite as a celebration, not a problem to be solved.
Rather throw a party.
We'd have to find money in the budget for that. See, the underwrite doesn't cost us any money.
Okay, well, yeah, all right. I'll fund the party. I'd rather fund the party than try to govern the town if one of the big commercial properties went under and we had this underwrite.
You can also have a time when cooler heads don't prevail.
And that's a time when, you know, I might be on the ramparts about an underwrite myself, but, you know? And, and again, we, we do, we have a robust budget process. I, you know, I find that you guys are both tough and reasonable when we have come year after year and it's been a dynamic and cooperative arrangement. And I think we've become more and more, you know, efficient, more and more functional in that way. So, you know, again, I think it ain't broke.
Yeah.
So, so why make ourselves broke?
Our last warrant article is about closing a bunch of old warrant articles.
Yeah. We did, we did hear that some of those may be closed out. What we're going to try to do is we have to, some of those may already be spent.
Yes, yes.
We need to then circle back to those who were charged with spending them.
Right.
And I don't know if that has been completely done, but I think the point is, except for that kind of administrative checking, not a problem.
Right. So I think there's some administrative checking that might adjust that warrant article up to sort of the last minute that, and I think the list is going to shrink more than it's going to grow.
I think that's right.
Because as we find some that are already spent or a reason to hold on to it. But I think, you know, not a big fan of warrant articles staying open for years and being spent on things that weren't necessarily the original intent of the taxpayers when they were voted on. And so I think we have a good list. I am, FinCom is recommending that all the money that, from those closed warrant articles go into stabilization regardless of where they originally came from. Because in some respects, we'd like to put some more money into stabilization this year and believe that will be difficult to do with the number of warrant articles we have that are wanting funding. And so this allows us to both put some money into stabilization and, and still fund some of the warrant articles we have.
When we, when we talked about that, I think, you know, stuff that came out of, you know, general funds or was raised or appropriated, you know, if you want to put it back into general funds or if you want to put it in stabilization, that, you know, that's, we would like to suggest that where the money came out of, you know, a gift account or something like that, that it go back, including the, you know, the cultural mitigation fund. But that's very, very short money, if anything, that, that stands out. But other, you know, stuff that was a general appropriation, we think that's fine.
Okay. That requires extra research because we have to go back and look at each one of them and exactly where they all came from.
We could tell you those that, and I think there may be just one, if that, but, you know, the idea being if we, you know, if, if, if we voted out of that cultural fund, let's say $5,000 for school and they spent 3,500.
Right.
We'd like that to go back into that cultural fund. But again, I think you're talking about really short money, if anything at all.
Right. I think there might be a library one since we did a lot of the library repairs out of the cultural fund.
Yeah, that might be.
Early on, we could look at those.
Just because we feel that fund, first of all, you know, there's not going to be that much left, but that, that fund can be a little bit of a pump priming for stuff that might otherwise, you know, not be done. And we spent it at, you know, at people's direction, but we spent it out of a gift account, so.
Okay.
Okay. But again, that's, we're not talking big money there.
Just going forward, I'm wondering if this is a process you would maybe do every year or whether there's a way we can do the warrant articles so that they have a sunset date or...
I've always loved the idea of having sunset dates on warrant articles. I've been rebuffed a couple of times. I've tried to raise it over the last nine years and, and so I haven't done it at this point. I'd like to think that it continues on to more aggressively because right now it is, our process as a town is waiting for the, the funding, the person, the department responsible for overseeing the fund to decide they're done with it. And even in the conversations we had with departments that are now agreeing to close them, like, well, it was designed to buy this vehicle. We sort of hold on to it so if that vehicle needs repairs or other things, we can use that sort of stuff and it's not really what that was fun for. You have a maintenance budget to maintenance, that should just be closed out, you know? If you gave money to, to paint a building, you should paint it the next year or two and not wait five or six or seven years between painting. We don't have any of these because these have been closed earlier because of going after some is that if you have a warrant article to buy software or buy computer hardware, within a year or two, the industry has changed so much that whatever you were looking at is probably the wrong thing for the town at this point, or the pricing has changed so substantially that it's not the right thing to do and trying to close that. And, you know, also thinking of the treasurer's job, the fewer open funds we have, you know, the, the shorter the monthly closed book, you know, of all the funds and all their balances get. And if I think if I had more unlimited time...
And it's not so much the treasurer's lady who's behind you.
Sorry. I even pointed her out, I did that.
I could see her smiling over your shoulder about closing those out.
You know, I, I'd love to have, you know, a, a free half year or so to sit down and figure out which one of the other line items and how many of the things that make up those things we could go back and, and close out and return funds to someplace or another to, to make the... to, to make the accounting of the town a little bit simpler. But we'll go after the warrant articles, which seem to be the easier ones to, to try to go after and.
No, I think that's fine. And again, I would emphasize that when you look at all of the special articles we passed and you looked at that, you know, relatively short list, I mean, it already is the case that, you know, 85, 90% of the cases, things get spent, you know, pretty much right away.
Yes.
So, you know, it's, it's not, and, you know, I, I, I agree with you. I think we need to go through them every year and chuck them if, if we, if we don't.
Again, I think you're not talking about huge money in some of them. Several ones we're closing are less than $1,000 each, but.
Right.
It sounds like basic bookkeeping, though. It's just something that you do.
It, it is something, every, and every year we, we look at this and we close out some and we don't close out others. And, yeah, so we, we do it every year.
So I think that's what I had.
All righty.
You have two reserve fund transfers that you guys are voting on tonight. And we'll vote on Wednesday. I don't have, we don't have quorum here right now.
You want to talk about legal expenses, though?
Well, I think at this point it's probably.
I think you've warned us that legal expenses might go over before the end of the year.
Yes, well, and this, here's, here's, here's the thing. We were going to sort of wait until we went over because that's normally your, your policy. I think at this point, I heard 1,600. Yeah, that's what I thought. And, you know, we, we still have a calendar quarter.
Yep.
We do know that there will be expenses attendant to certainly ZBA.
Yep.
There are continuing expenses related to Maplewood that we would expect. So I think that we do need to, I think that we do need to add an amount. We, we haven't actually discussed the exact amount at this point. I'm inclined to think it's around, probably around, I think it's between $7,000 and $10,000 because we have, we have the
You mean for the rest of the year?
For the rest of the year.
Yeah.
Yes.
You know, I, I think we have, my, my memory is one of those things that is not quite what it had been. But I thought we've only done one or two relatively small transfers already this year.
Yeah.
And so one of the big things we might look at as we get closer is Snow and Salt will have a deficit spend that we've approved. And with at least one more storm on the way, we'll continue to deficit spend. But we did last year use reserve funds instead of free cash to, to fund Snow and Salt, which gave us more money at town meeting to be able to, to do other pieces.
Yep. And that actually, you just reminded me, there's, there's two, two other items that we had talked about discussing with you. We are going to be doing, you know, if you will, a search and hire for the combined treasurer collector position. And we will also, because the interim fire chief's contract expires at the end of this coming fiscal year, we will be, I would say, you know, engaged in a search for fire. Typically, in the past, we have budgeted an amount of about $10,000 to support that, you know, for consultancy, background checks, et cetera. And we have not put that in our budget.
I thought you did a budget.
Oh, we did amend it.
I was going to say, you just amended your budget to add $20,000.
No, that's, okay, we did. Yes, you're right, sorry.
Yeah, 10 for each.
But I wanted to point that out.
You don't get 40.
I probably signed it.
Signed by a printed name, but yes.
Actually, I, yeah, I signed it.
Oh, okay. Mary did it, it wasn't me.
Well, you
We had discussed that. And I didn't, I didn't remember that we'd actually gotten that to you at this point.
Nope, I, I got it both by mail and in a paper form today.
I just, I wanted to point that out. Obviously, those are figures that could be funded out of reserve fund transfer. And frankly, I can't tell you, you know, I, I think there'll probably be at least five and probably as much as 10.
Yep.
That's what I know about it, you know? So we, we put it in there. Your thoughts on that are welcome, but that's why those are in there.
And, and there are ways where we might decide that we'll, you know, give you $5,000 for each of those and it turns out that one of them is higher or both of them are higher than that reserve fund.
That's fine, yes, yes.
So we had, so we, we don't plan on potentially spending a third of the reserve fund or, or so and, and on something we believe is going to happen, so.
No, that's, that's fine, but that
It gives you something to cut in fiscal year 20.
I wanted to point out to you that we'd, we'd shove those in at the last minute because when we were really through with our budget process, we went, oh, wait a minute. That's, those two things are happening next year. Okay? And those will both be, I'm just lacking because they'll both be, they'll both be positions appointed by, so, yeah, okay. Anything else?
The
Just, we were here to represent the Capitol.
The Capitol planning.
Ah, yes.
Wasn't able to be here, I guess, because they had an operation. So anyway, I'm not sure if any questions came up or not regarding, regarding.
Well, those mainly are the special articles.
I didn't hear a lot of comment, you know?
Yeah, I mean, that's fine.
I, I think you guys, well, we have the, I, I'm talking to Dave mostly. The, the work that's been done to try to sort of smooth out the curve a little bit, where some years looked like they were going to be really, as you smooth out the curve going further. And I think that was one of the reasons why a couple of warrant articles, we believe, are being postponed, both the fire truck and the paving of this, this parking lot. Because next year didn't look as bad as this year.
Whether those have been deferred?
Whether they've been deferred?
Yeah.
I, I don't for sure. They've been pushed, they've been pushed. I know in the case of
Yeah, just very in the paper.
The, the fire chief and I think one of the trucks was, we pushed it to 2020. He's, he wants, I think, I think, wants to relook at moving it back to 2019. It was split, the funding on it was split.
Okay, right.
And the reason for that was, you know, apparently when you order a truck, it takes a couple of years to build it and they need a down payment and so on and so forth. It's cheaper to do it that way. So anyway, he has an issue with that.
But And to be clear, the amount of $200,000 that you're looking at, those are a reduction to a combination of special articles and existing budget or budget? I mean, when you give that $800,000, that includes
That is just budget.
That is just budget. It is not the special articles and capital.
Right, special article capitals, depending on what list you use.
No, no, that's
The list I had, they were at 1 million and it did not include the paving of the parking lot or the, or the truck.
That's right. I thought this was just budget, but then as we started talking and pushing things off, I just wanted to be sure I understood. Yep.
Just for some reason, I thought the parking lot was on and other things had dropped. But like I said, it was a piece of paper. I don't have the email.
It was on what? I'm sorry?
We got a piece of paper, not the email. I thought it was, I thought the paving was staying because the parking lot was such a mess and other things were dropping, but I can't remember what they were.
In the, in the sheet, it's, it's pushed out.
Yes, I've been going by what the spreadsheet has. We'll have to confirm with the department heads that they have, they've signed off on it. Because, as I said, because of the ability to look out 10, I think it might even be 20 years out. You're looking, but there's, you can see some, some peaks and some troughs. And, and to work with people now about, okay, find a way to make this last another year. Or, or sometimes it could be, you know, maybe we can pull this forward a year so that we have a more even funding source and more even ability to pay. Because the amount of money we have this year, $6, $800,000, is usually what we have between free cash and, and some of the other funds.
Right.
Sometimes a bit lower. But this year, like the ambulance, we'll, we'll go out of the ambulance fund, which is not one of those you spend
Right.
every year. You spend a decade sort of putting a little bit of money into it every year until you need a new ambulance. And then you spend down that fund is what we've been, been looking at.
So they had recommended, I thought, that that moved.
They've pulled out your, the spreadsheets.
Yeah, the spreadsheet suggests spending
This was the recommendation from Capital Planning, was the great one, though.
Yeah, yeah. That you did suggest pushing it all out. And he had suggested spending 150 this year.
Yep.
Yep.
And, and what he, what the police, the fire chief might not sort of understand is although you're only putting 150 down this year, you have to fund the whole thing.
Yeah, it's the recommendation.
And I think that's the key. The key is you're appropriating it this year, you're, you know, committing to the funds.
Right.
But I, I think it needs to be communicated back in that
That was, that was still in there.
This is what we're doing and he's got to push back.
The priority one is just that they tinkered with the original request.
Yeah. We, we're showing, this, this is your, I think you guys
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if that's up to date or not.
Okay.
It's pretty close.
Because this one doesn't show the, the parking lot pavement being pushed out.
We definitely pushed it out.
You definitely did?
Yeah, and they're later
2020.
And even, even Keith in his conversations with us
Sure.
thought that his, that replacing the dump truck with a truck sander plow was, was a much higher priority for him than, than the, the paving project. It did not have a vehicle I thought was going to be, he didn't have a vehicle planned for next year so that, that he could do a warrant article next year for that.
All right.
But I'll at least email the, the fire chief about where he stands on the, the truck. There's an all, a util, a sport, a ATV, UTV, utility, things that could go on the paths that I thought the police chief had agreed to postpone to next year because he was going to look for a grant for, for this year. But I'll confirm that with him. And I will do an email to Keith at Highway about where he stands with the, the parking lot so that when FinCom votes and I think we're playing on budget this Wednesday and, and warrant articles next Wednesday. And so we have some time to sort of iron out those pieces. I'll make sure Mary included on those so that whenever they respond, you and I will both have it and know whether or not it's something we are, should have a warrant article and vote on or something that's getting pulled.
And I, well, I'll get to the chief probably Thursday and talk to him both about the budget.
Right.
And the warrant articles.
Okay.
You'll have voted the budget, but, you know, as you say,
Right.
there's still some time to respond.
We do. One of the reasons why we, we voted the budget because sometimes, let's say, we want, instead of $180,000, we give them $90,000, half of it. It could be, he comes back saying, look, if you give us 100 instead of 90, it allows me to hit this threshold because 90, I can't really hire enough, even one person, but 100 I can. And we might decide that's a reasonable compromise. We've had that before where we've cut from a department and they said, look, for $600 more, I can get this much of it. But at the number you gave me, it's not a useful number. And so we've, we've generally been accommodating where we can.
And if you, can you get, can you get to Mary early on Thursday? Because it's probably going to be Thursday, late morning or early afternoon that I speak with the chief, what you voted on that budget
Yeah.
Wednesday?
Yeah.
Because that way I can take that into account when I speak to him on Wednesday.
Yep, yep.
If there's some way this could be available either via Google Drive or something as you guys update it, that would be awesome.
I can, we haven't updated, we don't have a specific drive. I can, Dave has it, I think. I don't know whether he, did he send it?
He gave it to me on a phone drive.
Oh, is that what he did?
It was like two weeks ago plus probably by now. So while you change it live time, like the FinCom changes their budget, we can get it live time.
We see it.
Okay.
I only had the most, like, two and a half weeks ago
Right.
copy.
Do you?
We, yeah, we got an updated one this afternoon.
Yeah.
And I can email you guys the, the version.
Yeah, that would be great. Just for long term, I think it would be really helpful to store that in a place where we could all see it.
Yeah, no, I agree, I agree.
And likely because FinCom, after we do our votes, we usually email any department head we didn't do their requested budget on. So that a couple of weeks later, if there's adjustments we need to make, we can. Once we do our final votes, I'll likely even send that Google link out to like the Berlin neighborhood connect so people can see it ahead of time. And I think people are there informed before town meeting. I think last year when I did it, I got four or five emails of people who had some quick questions who I'm hoping got good answers so they didn't have to ask it on the floor.
Yeah, no, I think that's, that's great.
And, yeah, I like the Google Drive because then all of us can stay sort of up to date and you're seeing the same document I'm seeing, so. Okay.
Anything else from Cap Planning?
No, that's it. I mean, basically, we were here to, you know, if there were any issues or questions, just to
I, I found their work quite helpful, so.
Yes, I did too.
I'm glad we've organized one.
Absolutely.
You've done a great job.
Thank you.
I want to thank everybody for their efforts.
Yes.
Yeah.
Great.
FinCom and Capital Planning. Thank you.
Mutual Admiration Society.
Huh?
Mutual Admiration Society.
Until we start cutting everything.
No, it's okay. I'll still like you after you come. Stop.
Okay. Thank you.
Went away for now.
Oh, good.
See what happens in the wind. All right.
And I'm typically in here in other rooms on Wednesday. If you have any questions, just come grab me if you think there's anything I can help with.
The Wednesday may be pretty
I'm from an admiration question.
Oh, yeah, nice to meet you.
Yeah, I think, I think it was going to be
See what the care decides.
Well, I don't think they're going to be here this Wednesday. I think that's, I mean, we're looking at 11, I think, at least 11 inches, 12 to 18 was last one.
As I say, we'll see what
I don't think
Well, Joe and Hannah are going away and that typically means that we get a lot of
These two driveways are huge.
Yeah, but we, that's driving the runs around. No, it's a matter of fact, it's usually We moved the two cars, we used the way the front driver, which was, it's like less than a car like the shovel or the trucks that swept off the cars. Our big problem is we have a Nordic porch that glaciates, it's fenced in, you can't, so you shovel it like throwing one way over and then you have to roof shovel. That's the most difficult part of ours.
Worst thing for us is we have to get the horses out the next morning.
Yeah. I know that. I'm just waiting for people to
He's wondering.
No, no, we're, we're good, we're good.
All right.
All right. Selectmen, anything else?
Did we do anything?
Oh, the warrant review.
Because I do have some feedback on our
Yeah.
certain committees with requests to have there.
Okay, so let's talk about that.
Did you put together the warrant from what we talked about last?
Yep, it's here.
Okay.
I can email to you.
There it is.
Not sure.
I got, I got the one that was in the, this is the one that was in the folders, that's the right one?
Don't know.
Okay.
It very well could have changed.
Okay.
I'm going to email it right now.
All right, so let's get on to reviewing the next cut of the ATM warrant.
Okay. We have left, what do we have, three warrant articles?
The underwrite CPA and town management, right? CPA, they asked to be put just before the wellness trail? If that makes sense to you?
CPA before the wellness trail?
Yeah.
Really?
That was the, the request that I.
Looking at this list? So let's see.
Why? Particular reason?
Just to sort of, I think they feel that it, it does affect the same community, you know, because recreation is in there. So it affects the same community that affects schools and, and that particular bundle, but.
I'm not sure that's a good idea.
It was just a request and I said I would bring it here and.
Interesting. I mean, what it does is it sticks it in the middle of a number of, you know, relatively small expenditure items, which seems a little counterintuitive to me.
And to put it before the wellness trail. Would it cut the chances of that passing?
I don't think people understand that it has nothing to do with it.
No, but recreation will benefit from the CPA, correct?
They will.
Yeah.
So they'd say wait until CPA before you? Is that what you're suggesting?
No, I'm saying that if they pass the CPA, they may not feel that they need to pass the wellness trail. I'm just wondering.
Well, it's a PR business to make people understand what was going on certainly, but I don't see why somebody would do that.
Where would you put it? I mean, where would you put it instead if you didn't put it there?
I think it was, there was just like the middle was left, correct? Because we put things at the end and we put things at the beginning. I'm not, I mean, I'm not.
First, first of all, before we drop those, the three big ones, do you have any other?
The other one was town management requested to have theirs put right before planning.
Okay.
I was just, I missed the first, this first point you just juggled. Did you just move another article?
Not yet.
No, we're just talking.
Still talking.
Talking. Just talking. So that's after. It would be right after the, the fire by law. I'm, you know, I'm just trying to.
Had the CPA group looked at this warrant, Lisa, when they said that?
Buzz had seen it.
Okay.
He's the one who made the request.
I mean, it really, I mean, one way or the other, doesn't really matter to me if that's a good spot.
He, I mean, he really, I think he was horribly attached to it. It was just when I asked, I said, do you have any preference?
Well, we had actually talked last time about those, particularly those two big articles. Did we want them, you know, for a second?
Second night.
Night.
I mentioned, I did mention that to, to the town management study committee and they were sort of assuming that that would fall on the second night of it was with those planning articles.
Yeah. Sorry. I mean, how do you feel about that, Lisa?
I, I'm not sure. I mean, my impression is that CPA has passed multiple times at town meeting. It is when it gets to the ballot that it typically fails.
I'm not sure that's the case, but go ahead.
Tim, Tim Wheeler, actually.
Did he look at that?
He, he, he said that it had, had made it through town meeting.
Thanks.
So I'm not sure the level of. I don't know. I guess I would like to see the, the same community, like I said, that's voting on the schools and, and those types of elements because they also have a stake in that. It would be nice if they.
Oh, yeah. No, no.
Were able to vote on it, but.
I'm sorry.
Well, the, the folks, the same folks who would be voting for schools and, and the recreation stuff would have a stake in CPA also. So it'd be nice if it was in such a place that they were still in the room, even if they had to leave because they had to get their kids home or get home to their sitter. That was actually another request I had. I don't know if there's anything in the budget, but there was a request, request to actually maybe pay for babysitting there. The number of 250, 250 dollars was requested to pay for babysitters at the school.
But can be paid by who?
They had, they had asked if there might be money in the, the SLUAR budget for babysitting. I didn't know if there was or not.
Well, that's, that gets, I mean, I, I've had experience with trying to coordinate town use and school.
They were, they were dealing with the, with the arrangements.
They being?
Julie Lee and some of the folks.
And they talked to the school about it?
I hadn't gotten anything back from her yet.
I think it asks for volunteers from Toronto to come and babysit, but.
Well, you have to do Cory, I mean, you know, it, it does get complicated.
I know in other towns, they actually have, tend to have like teachers or.
Right, right. Yes. Staffs have been Cory checked and stuff like that. But, you know.
I think it'd be better if they organized it themselves.
Yeah. Well, like I said, they were, they were going to organize it. It just had been suggested, not by me, that perhaps the town could help pay for sitters.
I think the first thing to do is to check with the school.
Okay.
Okay. And the second thing to do would be how they would. Who would be doing the babysitting? You know, are they Cory checked? Are they town staff? Or they, you know?
I'll bring that back.
Yeah.
I said, I'm just, I'm the messenger here.
Oh, no, no, and no, and I, you know, I can't tell you how much, I wish this was easier to do than, than, you know.
Yep.
It's, it's just, it's always harder than you think to do something like that.
Well, if it's, it's been done before for certain things. And I think it was done through the Parent Teacher Association.
Okay.
Link.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think Julie is involved with Link.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, it was purely volunteer.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, and they may be able to do that, like I said, they just thought it would be.
The selectmen would get involved in.
If they could offer to pay the sitters, so.
Well, if they're town residents, it may be to their advantage to volunteer the time. I don't know.
Go ahead.
Oh, that's what I had. We were, now I guess we go back to where you want to put the.
It's the CPA and the what?
It's CPA and the town administrator or town management study committee.
And.
The underwrite.
Okay.
Underwrite. Underwrite's something different.
Other than that, though, people were largely happy with this.
The ones that saw it didn't seem to have any.
All right.
Can I suggest that perhaps we put the, the CPA after the wellness trail?
Okay.
Do you have any, I mean, is there any sense of where this might split if we were gonna split to two nights? Or you just go until you're like exhausted?
We didn't post for two nights, so it would just be whatever time it is at 11:00.
Yeah, we can post for two nights.
Yes, we can. We didn't so far.
That's what I was asking, is, you know, would it make sense to put sort of a cutoff for the first night or just it's so sketchy?
We don't know how long.
I'll tell you, I mean, as I thought it, I mean, as I thought about it. The. I was thinking that one, one way to do it would be to have the Community Preservation Act and the town manager be the first two items on the second night. And that once those two items were done, we would pick up any remaining business, you know, that remained from the first night. So that if you finished, then it would be getting people just for those two things. You know, and there's no right or wrong way to do this, you know, that, and I was thinking, those were two important things and to do them first, which is really difficult to do on the first night of the town meeting because you're gonna get budget stuff out of the way. That means those two important things, everybody knows.
Right.
Are gonna happen at 7:30, you know, and, and we'll move along straight from there.
In order to do that, then we do have to post for two nights?
Yeah, you just say that there's, you know, there's a two, two night agenda. And when you post, you say, you know, this is the agenda, the second night agenda will begin with these two items and then we'll continue with any business unfinished from the first night. I mean, that's.
Good.
And I thought that would, I mean, that would have the, you know.
I think that's a good idea because then people aren't tired and cranky when they're talking about two very big items.
Yeah, that was sort of my thought. I mean, you know, when we put it together.
Yeah.
I thought, okay, we got all these pieces together and then we got these like two big pieces that are, you know.
Right.
They're sitting there. Where are you gonna put them? I, I had, I, I did discuss informally and just, you know, with Barry, what he thought. And he, he didn't have any, you know, like, we, I mean, obviously we didn't nail it down. We just kind of chatted about it. He didn't think that, he didn't have any real significant objection to doing it as a, as a two night thing. And even said, yeah, you know, well, maybe the first night we'll finish up at 10:00 and we'll just come the next night at 7:30. I mean, that's. What I would like to suggest is maybe if we want to propose this, I could run it by Barry.
I mean, I actually ran into him too, and I, I agree. I don't think he had a problem with it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Do you want to run that maybe by Buzz on the, and the town meeting committee? And then we can come to a, a conclusion. Otherwise, it seems like we have a, you know, we have a pretty solid warrant here. Except for one item which I totally forgetting about. Any other business?
What about the underwrite?
I think that's the one he was totally forgetting about.
Yes, I got that.
That you just reminded about.
I got that. We're not obligated to put this on.
No, we're not. And I, I gotta say, I don't mind having a conversation about it. I don't mind having meetings about it. I don't, I just, I don't want to do it. I don't, you know, I don't want to put it on.
Well, I, I have to agree with you. I think it does impede on the flexibility.
Yeah.
And, you know, you don't know, you know, if there's commercial business that's gonna go by the wayside and suddenly you might need that flexibility.
I just don't know enough. I mean, it seems to me that most communities are constantly bucking up against two and a half, so I don't know.
And I know how hard it is to get two and a half passed.
Yeah.
If you need to.
Yep. So I, I just, I'm not familiar with any place or any precedent or any, you know. I don't have enough information frankly to really have a strong opinion.
I asked, I asked around and I, the people that I talked to said that they had never heard of a town doing this.
Okay.
Well, most of the people can't do that right now.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Nobody, nobody would because they're always like going the other way.
Right, right, right. No, you know, nobody has done this. I will tell you that we, for many, many years, and this goes back to, you know, even when Prop 2 and a half was still, was, was first passed, we sort of made a mistake in terms of valuation. And we were in terrible, terrible trouble for, I think, you, you've been around long enough to know that, those years. We were in terrible, terrible trouble, you know, bucking up against a, a ceiling that was artificially low because we screwed up, you know, the initial filings in, on two and a half. My feeling is this, you know, that it's, it's basically two and a half percent, okay, of the, of the value of the town. And if you take a million off of that, that's what you're doing, you know? You're saying, okay. And if you take a million, you know, and then if you take, you know, three million off because you have a failed commercial thing, then you're talking about a levy limit that's two and a half percent of that, you know? And it just, it just seems to me to be not the right way to approach it. You know, I think there's a budget process and the two and a, the two and a half percent of assessed value is the law, you know? So why would you say, why would we want to make it two and a half percent of our assessed value minus a million? Why would we want to be the only town in the Commonwealth that had that formula? And what does it do?
Might make the newspaper if.
It sure might. So.
You have a question in the audience?
Yes.
No, I just wanted to say that it has been done in about, been over 20 towns since 1988.
Okay.
So we wouldn't be the only one in the state, but it is very rare.
Okay, thank you.
And it would make the newspaper.
It would. No, because I asked, I asked town council and they said they, they weren't aware of anybody that they represented who'd done it. So, yeah.
They obviously don't know how to use Google.
There you go.
Thanks, Piper.
Yeah, anyway.
So are we moving on?
Yeah.
I think we're moving on for right now? And are we all?
You're, you're leaving it on for now or?
No.
You're taking it off?
I think we need to vote. I would like to have a vote to say I'm not in favor of putting it on. I'll make that motion.
So I'll second that motion.
Yes.
And a, and a yes vote would be to not put it on.
Correct.
Okay.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go with that too because I, I think we're just going to confuse people.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, you know, we're.
Because I'm frankly, you know, I thought I knew what I was talking about and I'm feeling confused. So I can't imagine that this would be anything but confusing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's something you could always do in the future. Doesn't mean it never will happen, but I think this isn't, I don't, I'm not in favor of it at this point, but.
Any further discussion?
That's it.
All those in favor of rejecting that warrant article suggestion, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. I don't think that will surprise them. All right. Anything else?
I think we're all set on the warrant, right?
Yeah, yeah. So now reports, other new business, all that good stuff.
Good. We didn't have a Highway Barn meeting last week, so anxious to see where we are this Wednesday.
Yeah. Anything from your?
You got all my stuff, so.
Mm-hmm. Or anything you want to mention in the meeting?
No, I don't think so.
I mean, I think we already mentioned some of the stuff. The, the closure policy, which we'll talk about more fully next, next week, but we'll do the dry runs we discussed. And Mary, before we leave, I'll give you a phone number and dial-in code that if you could pass it along to Keith and Paul for 645. Wednesday morning.
That's right.
Yeah, no, no, I just.
Yeah. You'll be like the superintendent of schools.
I will be. Let's see. I have not heard yet, you, people know that I responded to the ACO request, you know.
Right.
I have not heard back yet from that and I will certainly forward anything I get from DEP, you know, when I get that. And obviously if it requires a further adjustment of position or anything, we'll put it on the agenda and discuss it. Let's see. I I submitted, you know, at least a, a template response. We need to, you know, fill in some details and so on for the energy committee relative to that, you know, that contract and so.
Rick can do that, right?
Yeah, and as I say, if we need.
You will be eager and happy to do so.
Yeah, and if we need, as I say, if we need to have a 15-minute call or so, that's, that's fine. I tried to make it pretty clear by putting brackets in and stuff like that, but. Yeah, so I think, and I think that's.
That's it?
That's it.
I, we're gonna, so we're gonna talk about the weather policy next week. And the, possibly about the student walkout.
Yep.
And Deutsch Williams is what I wrote down.
Yep, that makes sense.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so would you like a motion to adjourn?
I always love that one.
Second.
On favor.
You didn't actually say motion to adjourn, so.
On favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.